I think they want to go to the ground.
I will be.
I'd like to call the April 26 Madison City Council Meeting Two Order. With that, I'd like to ask Pastor John D to come and open us in prayer.
Let's pray. Before we get to praying, just take a moment between you and the Lord. And just take a moment just to be quiet and tell the Lord in your own heart that you love him. And if there's anything between you and your Heavenly Father right now, just ask his forgiveness. Now, Father, thank you for an absolutely beautiful day. Thank you for Madison, Alabama. Thank you for this good place to be. Lord, we lift up these leaders in our community. We lift up these folks who often do a very, very thankless job. And Lord, I pray that you would just give them exceptional wisdom and grace as they lead this place. We thank you, Lord, for the many, many, many blessings. As crazy as life has been, we are so thankful to you. We just want to thank you for all your blessings and all your goodness. And we pray this in the matchless name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Would y'all join me in the pledge? Get the real call, please.
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Council President Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Looks like we got a quorum, so we'll move forward. Are there any changes? I know we have one changes under the presentation and awards. We'll move Senator Tom Butler. Is there any discussion? I get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now for the minutes from the April 21 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to presentation and awards. And we'll start with Ms. Wendy Reeves from the Drugs Free Community.
It's so great to be here and to see all of you this evening. Going to share a few things about what Partnership for Drug Free Community is about. Partnership has been around next month that we're going to be celebrating our 33rd year in Madison County. And a lot of people don't realize that. This is an overview of all of the programs that we have. Specifically tonight, I want to talk to you a little bit about our Recovery Resource Hub. The beginning of that actually started here in Madison at a town forum that we worked with Mara Robleski on a couple of years ago. And we also met Mike Woods. He's a peer support specialist. He's been with us every step of the way. What this program does is it helps cut through all of the confusion for people who are looking to find substance treatment help. Meaning they can call us, one call, they don't have to search countless hours on the Internet or on the phone for hours and hours, which is what we heard at that forum that we were at with Mara. And it's just very important to make it simpler for people. So during this first year, and if we can go to the next slide and then the next one. So throughout this past year, even in COVID, COVID hit six weeks after we got started. Didn't stop us. We just changed directions and kept going. Throughout, we even found a way to do outreach through our Days of Hope events, which is, this one is here in Madison. It was out at 72 Madison Boulevard. We saw about 150 people just telling them about outreach to people, just saying, hey, we're here with this program. If you need help or you know someone who needs help, give us a call. And the next slide. This is our Youth Tobacco Prevention and Vaping Program. This is at Discovery Middle School just about a couple of months ago. A virtual program, but the teacher took pictures. So you can see the kids are really engaged there. If you'll go to the next slide. This is our today's youth, tomorrow's leaders. It's made up of a small group of teens this year because of COVID. But they put together this campaign airing out Big Tobacco's Dirty Laundry. You can see on this slide. The kids took T-shirts, boxer shorts, different items of clothing. And they wrote quotes from big tobacco executives from over the decades that show how they have always targeted youth to draw them into that. The other side addresses the vaping problem that is really big in all of our schools right now. So the next slide shows just a couple of more. It's a very interactive display. Starting the week of May 22nd, it's going to start traveling to all the libraries. And it'll be at each library branch for about a month. It'll be here in Madison from May through June on that part. And then the next slide. And this is actually this packed Saturday. The Medication Take Back Partnership was integral in getting that started back in 2010. But we were here this weekend, had a great time, collected a lot of medications old and used that people don't need anymore. Wonderful thing in addressing that. So overall, this is just a brief snapshot of what Partnership does. But we ask for appropriations of 10,000 to help support our Recovery Resource Hub. That is to cover the cost of up to 100, 150 assessments that are required to get people into treatment programs throughout the state. So that's what we're here for tonight. Do you guys have any questions about what we do?
I just want to say thank you for all you do for our community, starting in elementary school all the way to my advanced age. Really appreciate you reaching out to everyone that that needs that help.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Holly Ralston with United States Space Rocket Center.
Sorry, I don't have the show and tell, but I do have the presentation tonight. And first of all, I want to thank Mayor Finley, Madison City Council, and esteemed members of the Madison community for the continued partnership and our mutual celebration of community, which takes place every day at the U.S. Space and Rocket Center. We've emerged from a challenging year. And while challenges remain, we are so glad to see improvement reaped from aggressive and consistent pandemic response. While operations at the Rocket Center are not yet in normal range, we anticipate a gradual return to our previous vibrant city this year. Also note that the community is eagerly returning to the center. And we have enjoyed seeing close to 2,000 visitors and residents in a single recent day. Again, as people begin to travel again, the city of Madison will reap benefit from both the educational opportunities at the center and from the tourism dollars that come from these same visitors frequenting Madison establishments. As noted in our request, funding will help support bringing in fresh exhibits that attract tourists. And that amount was in $7,500. Developed by subject matter experts from the Intrepid Sea, Air, and Space Museum and produced by Imagine Exhibitions, Drones is the Sky the Limit explores the modern phenomenon of drones, their uses throughout history, current applications for home, for entertainment, of course, for defense, and the exciting possibilities of the future role that drones will play in our society. Drones is the Sky the Limit features real drones, in-depth reader panels, and rich audiovisual content. A drone racing video interactive and provides a bird's eye view of the aeronautics, engineering, science, technology, and innovation of one of the most intriguing topics dominating our current technological culture. We will begin installing drones is the sky the limit beginning in mid-May with full display ready for our first week of Space Camp, which begins the 23rd of with full display ready for our first week of Space Camp, which begins the 23rd of May. And I will also add that this year, well, many of you probably know, we had a very small attendance at Space Camp last year due to the pandemic. We are expected to have 50% capacity this year. We're keeping the capacity down because we are dealing with people's children. And of course, we want to have a safe and yet fun experience for those children. Additionally, with the exhibit, we're reaching out to a variety of expertise that exists in our shared backyard. I'm sure there will be many individuals from the Madison community who will be reaching out to help us with the drones exhibit. We'll also have participating groups like AUVSI. That's the Association of Unmanned Vehicle Systems International. And of course, our institutions of higher education who love seeing graduates of the Space Camp family of programs. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those at this time, whether it's about the exhibit, or whether it's about camp, or the Rocket Center this year.
No, ma'am. But thank you so much for everything you do. Next, we have Ms. Mary Elizabeth Mar and Mr. Mark Moore with Thrive.
Mary Elizabeth had surgery, so I'll be speaking for her tonight. I am Mark Moore, the Director of Development and Marketing at Thrive Alabama. I bring you greetings and gratitude from our CEO, our board, our staff, and our patients. Thrive Alabama is a community health center nonprofit located at 600 St. Clair in Huntsville. We have been in the Huntsville area since 1988, initially serving people living with HIV. Then, a few years ago, we decided to expand our services beyond that. Our goal is always to serve those who would otherwise be left behind by the medical system. Now we offer primary care to people of all ages from all walks of life, particularly those with insurance issues, be that no insurance or limited insurance such as Medicaid or Medicare. Our goal is to provide quality healthcare to all those who come to our door. Currently, we have about 3,700 patients among all of our clinics. But our goal, based on a community health needs assessment, found that with 92,000 to 94,000 patients in need of healthcare, we could serve 14,000 patients in a new state-of-the-art healthcare facility located in our community. What makes this health center unique is that it will have not only primary care and pediatrics, but it will also have an extensive behavioral healthcare unit, an onsite pharmacy, onsite lab, onsite dental, and onsite vision. This will be unique in that all of these services will be open to people without regard to their insurance or income abilities. Any questions?
Are you able to provide mental healthcare as well for those that may not have it done another way?
Absolutely. We currently provide behavioral healthcare through direct pay and insurance. We also have a grant-funded substance abuse program that partners with mental healthcare. That's unique also in that it is offered at no cost to the people who participate. In our new expanded space, we have, we will balloon our behavioral healthcare offerings, and they'll be available to anyone who comes to the clinic for primary care. They can get an internal referral. You may have also seen us this past summer during the pandemic, doing COVID testing alongside Huntsville Hospital, as well as individual testing opportunities of our own in Madison, North Huntsville, and South Huntsville. Two weeks ago, we began offering the COVID vaccination, and that is now also open to the public.
Wonderful.
Thank you for those services.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next, we have the presentation of community policing awards.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say how proud I am to be able to give these awards. We have a lot of awards to recognize the actions and the performance of duties for our police officers. But just to kind of share with you what's important to the police officers in our police department. About two months ago, I had three different patrol officers ask me, sir, how can I get a community policing award? Not a Medal of Valor, not a Medal of Honor. How can I get a community policing award? So it's really special for me to be able to present these tonight. First, I'd like to call up Officer Dion Hoos, if you will. Officer Dion Hoos has been employed with the Madison Police Department since June of 2018. In that time, he has distinguished himself as an officer who is committed to our mission to serve and protect to the highest standards attainable, while enhancing the quality of life for all of our citizens through professional police services. Officer Hoos has dedicated himself to serving our community and has been recognized by citizens, his peers, and his supervisors for a number of events that establish rapport and communication with our community. Some of these events include, but are not limited to, organizing a quarantine birthday parties for children in our community that were not able to have parties during COVID because they couldn't have friends over. Instead, we had a public safety parade. He's also participated in numerous department outreach events that have reflected favorably on the Madison Police Department and our community. In other examples, he's taken special time with teens in our community that are troubled, going to their homes and speaking to them. Most recently, a citizen commended Officer Hoos saying that their family are fans of the Madison Police Department for life because of you. You responded to their home and spent time speaking with their daughter, who is experiencing emotional turmoil and she's depressed. Citizens have also written their thanks for, and I quote, "Creating an environment where officers are protectors, encouragers, and motivators of our community." And I believe this is the perfect way to describe Officer Hoos. We're pleased to present him with the Madison Police Department's Community Policing Award. Next up is Lieutenant Christie Gober. This is also a special award. Over 20 years ago, Lieutenant Gober and I were one of the first three officers to begin the Rape Aggression Defense Program in the city of Madison. We also call it the RAD program. Lieutenant Christie Gober has been employed with the Madison Police Department since 1999. In that time, she served the citizens of Madison in a variety of roles and leadership positions. This includes detective investigating crimes against children, sexual assaults, crime scene investigator, patrol sergeant, and a patrol lieutenant. One of her most significant contributions to our citizens is the work that she has done with the Rape Aggression Defense Program, also known as RAD. Lieutenant Gober was one of the first three RAD instructors in the Madison Police Department, and she led that program as the lead instructor and administrative organizer for over 20 years. The RAD program is a service provided free of charge to the women of Madison. This self-defense program is nationally recognized and not only teaches women how to successfully defend themselves against physical assault, but it empowers them to feel secure in themselves and their right to be free of victimization. Over the course of 20 years, Lieutenant Gober has taught hundreds of women from Madison to believe in their ability to defend themselves against violent assault. These ages range from 70 to 70 years old. Some women are bound for college, others simply want the security and knowledge that the skill provides in this program. In January of 2021, Lieutenant Gober turned the reins of the program over to new RAD instructors, who are carrying the program forward to the finest traditions of the Madison Police Department and the example that she has set. This dedication and exemplary commitment to the citizens of Madison, we're pleased to present the Community Policing Award to Lieutenant Gober. One more thing. Hold on. Got a surprise for you. Lieutenant Gober, we also have for you a certificate of appreciation from RAD Defense Systems, signed by the CEO and executive board member Kathy Wright, we trained under. So if you would, come get this, along with a coin that Kathy has sent you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into public comments. We don't have anybody that signed up, so anybody that'd like to come and address, Council and Mayor, please, please come up. Ms. BB? Nothing? Okay. We will move into the Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee viewed all the bills. Everything was in order. I do have one thing to point out. It was an anonymous donation of $20 that goes to our fire department. And the fire department donation came, all I have.
We'll move to approve.
Move to approve.
All right, motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I get to vote, please.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right. Well, I'll follow up some of the presentations with a request for appropriations. I'll start with Resolution Number 2021-124-R, approving the annual appropriation agreement with the Partnership for Drug-Free Community for their FY '21 appropriation, the amount of $10,000 to be paid from the general fund.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I get to vote, please.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. And then I'll follow that up by asking for approval of Resolution Number 2021-125-R, approving the annual appropriation agreement with U.S. Space and Rocket Center for their FY '21 appropriation, the amount of $7,500 to be paid from the general fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? I get to vote, please.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. And the last of the resolution approvals would be asking for council approval of the 2021-126-R, approving the annual appropriation agreement with Thrive of Alabama for their FY '21 appropriation, the amount of $25,000 to be paid from the general fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up just a little bit, Greg. You know, this was one of those that we added at mid-year. It was a request that came from Thrive in a lot of instances, using our COVID money that had come in from the government to the state, the state to us. And, you know, listening to what we just talked about, where they were side by side with Huntsville Hospital throughout the course of testing. And they now are in a position to help so many folks that are in need when it comes to getting the vaccines, which we all are trying to push forward. I know Councilwoman Bartlett is keeping track of the state of Alabama, and, you know, we continue to hit solid numbers. So this is a one-time ask, but it goes back to the COVID money that we received.
Absolutely. I get to vote, please.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
In motion passes.
All right. And then just two quick follow-ups. One, I know I gave council a quick heads up, but I wanted to give everyone else out there a heads up also when it came to our police chief interviews. We conducted interviews last week. They were, I guess, a week and a half ago narrowed our field down. So we should be announcing the four finalists that we will be bringing to the city council for interviews. We'll be announcing that most likely Wednesday to the general public. A week from Wednesday, council will have your packets ready for each of those four finalists. And then the police chief interviews will take place Saturday, May 8, here there in council chambers. They start, they should start about 8 o'clock in the morning. So three different steps to, I think we're going to be able to bring you guys four incredible candidates. And looking forward to a great day on May 8. Also, just real quick and follow up, I know a lot of people asking about the ramps and the follow-up to those. We continue to just have such solid progress with the Alabama Department of Transportation. And I have every confidence that, and I just wrote here, by no later than the end of April, those ramps will be open. We've got one last piece to take care of. All that's been great to work with. They understand our timeframe and our requirements and are working diligently with us and Town Madison to help make that happen. So with that said, Greg, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. District number one.
Yes, sir. Last Thursday, we had our town hall that we discussed the roundabout that's going in at the corner of Gillespie and Bolts. And I just want to extend my thanks to the mayor's office, to councilmembers Spears and Seifert for their participation, to our engineering director for his wise counsel and participation, Samantha, who ran the meeting so smoothly. I just so, am so appreciative to everyone. We do have that information now. If you go to our website, which is madisonal.gov, click on Engineering. There is a designated section that will be devoted specifically to the roundabout. And we'll just continue to push out the information as we get it. But we're looking at May to August, and I think it's just going to be a huge asset to that part of town. And I just want to thank everyone that was involved with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. District number two.
I also would like to thank everybody who helped make the town hall a reality, and Mara for leading us as we had this town hall. We had, between Zoom and the people in the room, we had 30 participants, which is fairly good for a town hall, especially in the middle of COVID restrictions. And I appreciate the people who took the time to tune in either on YouTube, Zoom, or to come to the meeting. Also, I would like to say I appreciate everyone who applied for the Madison Police Citizens Advisory Council. We had, I think it was a total of 64 applicants across the city. In my district, there were 11 applicants. And, you know, we get one choice. That's all we get. And so there are some people that we were not able to choose who would be phenomenal. And I have encouraged them when I sent out my emails to apply for other boards and committees here within the city. And one of them, I heard back from, very, very nice email that he has already applied for another committee. And so we have many, many opportunities within our city to serve on various boards and committees. And some of those places have been vacant for quite a while. So you could just step into a committee immediately if that's what you're looking for. And I would hope that y'all would consider possibly applying for a different board or committee. Thank you.
District number three.
I'll kind of second what Connie said. You know, I sit down up here, and when we do these interviews, every time I do the interviews, I always realize that the people I'm interviewing are a whole lot smarter than I am. So it's humbling, and I appreciate everyone who's applied, all the, you know, the applicants. And I was really surprised at the number that we got for the Police Advisory Committee. That was great. And then, you know, the number we got for school boards. So there's so many boards to be involved, and they're all important. You know, it's a way to get involved in the community. And then, you know, from there, you know, we're just going to have such a better group. So I appreciate all of you guys that are on it and all of you ladies that have, that applied and that are on it too, and as well as the school boards. So great applicants, and we appreciate it. I like that.
District number five.
Connie, I'm so glad you mentioned all of our other boards that we have because one of the things that I noticed in interviewing the candidates for District Five's representative on the Police Advisory Committee was first the excitement of getting the opportunity to serve in this way. Everyone was so excited to serve. And a number of the applicants mentioned that when they went online to apply, they had no idea how many boards and committees we actually had. And so like Connie, I had encouraged them to apply to other boards as well and to also come to meetings because the public will be able to attend the meetings of this committee and continue the conversations that we had during the interview. So they were just outstanding applicants. All of them were very difficult to choose. Last week, I participated in a fair housing symposium hosted by the Huntsville Area Association of Realtors. This was really well done, and it focused on improving access to homeownership and raising awareness of some of the impediments to owning a home. I learned that on the national level, student loan debt was the greatest impediment to homeownership, and that racial disparities exist with respect to student loan debt. I asked about the statistics for the Huntsville area and if it mirrored the national statistics that were shared, and learned that 2017 was the last time a local area study was done. So that information will be updated, and they hope to get that to us. Uh, during the symposium, they emphasized that financial literacy and educational initiatives are key, whether they be in schools, uh, conducted by faith-based communities or other civic meetings. And so, um, we're going to be engaging in those to help, uh, in terms of, uh, fair housing. And then my shop local spotlight, I'm moving to downtown Madison this time, and I'm helping you find some Mother's Day gifts. I'm going to recommend that you check out a new business called Lemon and Lavender. The minute you walk in, you're going to smell these wonderful smells from bath bombs and shower bombs and soaps and lotions, and they also have some, uh, food items. One of the recent additions is Kona Coffee. So if your mom likes Kona Coffee, you might want to check them out, and that's it.
Very good. District Number Six.
First, I want to thank you for having Zoom. It's allowed me to be here in Michigan with my granddaughter. She's celebrating her first birthday. So I'm thrilled we have this opportunity to meet virtually. Um, I'm just going to piggyback on what everybody said about all the applicants that came forward that are willing to serve the city. It is amazing, the quality and the number of people. I am thrilled. But I especially want to talk about the police advisory committee. If you were not chosen, please come and be involved anyway. There, it's going to take all of us working together as a community in order to have no one in the community feel disadvantaged, for everyone to come together. I hope that there are subcommittees for teenagers, so they don't feel the least bit afraid around the police authority, and for businesses, and just all the different ways that the police affect our lives and how we can all come together as a community. Um, especially everything that we hear in the news these days. I am so, I'm so pleased with our, with our law enforcement. And they do a very compassionate job. Um, the more I talk to them, the more I understand. They really do put the person first. And I really appreciate that from our police officers, all of them. They're wonderful. So, uh, since I am so far away, I'll keep my, I'll keep my message short, but, um, thank you, everyone who applied. It really was a hard decision. Um, it was. We have such great people in Madison, so thank y'all.
Very good. Thank you, Karen. District Number Seven.
I'll say like me, me seven. Second, I can't say second, it's last, but, um, yeah, thanks tomorrow for putting on the, the, uh, town hall. I thought it went really well. Engagement was, was very good, and thanks to Gary and IT and, and Samantha for, uh, you know, getting all that set up. Uh, things worked, uh, pretty seamlessly. Um, and then also thanks for those that applied, uh, to the boards, um, to, uh, specifically the, the citizens advisory committee for the police. Uh, and then also, uh, don't want to forget Board of Education, and I'll just kind of, I might go a different route. Um, you know, our boards are only as good as those that apply. Um, and we have some fantastic boards, but just like the militaries and all volunteer, uh, things. So, um, those boards, please continue applying, um, because again, we can only choose from those that do apply. So we have a very good board, but we keep that because there's a lot of interest and certainly good and, and great citizens within the community. So, um, again, as others have said, you know, if you weren't necessarily picked, uh, doesn't mean that you can't be used elsewhere. Um, and certainly I appreciate you applying and, and, uh, you know, continue to please get involved, because, you know, our community, community and, and areas are only as good as those that, uh, those that come forward and ready to volunteer. So that's all I got.
Good. Thank you. I'd just like to echo that also, and just to everyone in District Four, thank you for applying. Um, if you didn't get on this board, then there's, um, there's several vacancies. Please, please stay involved. That will move into board committee and appointments, and we'll start with Mark.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dawson Brown to place seven. That's the parent of a child with special needs, uh, to the McDabb board.
Are there any other appointments?
Yeah, I, yes. Right, Megan? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Then I'd like to request to appoint Dawson Brown to place seven by affirmation.
Any other appointments, recommendations? Alright, we'll, we'll place him on the board through acclamation.
Okay, and then I'd like to, um, request, uh, acclamation for Amy Patterson to place nine. She is a member of a business with a special needs focus, uh, on the McDabb board. Each, each of the McDabb boards have a specific, um, role in their place, and, and that's what.
Any, any other appointments, recommendations? We'll place Amy through acclamation.
Thank you.
Then you've got next.
I do. Then my last one is I would like to request appointment of Cindy Sanderson to place six on the municipal cemeteries committee.
Any other recommendations? And we'll place Cindy on board through acclamation.
Thank you.
And, uh, Renee.
Okay, appointment of Board of Education place three. I have to commend the applicants and the finalists. The quality was just outstanding. Uh, it's quite a privilege and honor to get to sit on the other side of the interview table this time. Uh, Mrs. Spears and I enjoyed that very much, uh, and not having to answer all of those tough questions that we got to ask. But it is time for nomination, and I would like to nominate Alice Lessman.
Any other, any other recommendations? Then we'll place, uh, Ms. Alice Lessman on the board. Thank, thank you for your service. Man.
There's a six foot, there's a six foot rolling here.
Good evening. I am pleased to present resolution number twenty twenty-one one thirty-four, and this resolution presents the slate of nominees for the new Madison Police Citizens Advisory Committee. And I think we have some of them here with us this evening, so I'd like to ask you to stand when I call your name. First, we have for place one, for council district number one, Mr. Curtis Potts. Thank you, sir. For place two, for council district number two, we have Ms. Sarah Browder. Alright. For council district number three, we have Mr. Billy Goodson. Sir. For council district number four, we have Mr. Frank Fletcher. For council district number five, we have Mr. Dwayne Kraft. For council district number six, we have Ms. Rebecca Franz. For council district number seven, we have Mr. Paul Fontaine. And the mayor's appointment is Mr. Mark Highsmith. Thank you all so much for serving the city in this capacity. We'll have one more nominee to present to you all once the police chief is appointed, so that will happen after you all make a decision on that. I'd like to note that the terms for places number two, four, and six, and for the mayor's appointment, will be serving initial two-year terms, and that's just so we have staggered terms, so we don't have full committee turnover every four years. But everybody who's serving a two-year term will be eligible for reappointment if they would like to continue serving in this capacity. And with that, I'd like to ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Is there any, uh, discussion? I'd like to thank all y'all for, uh, applying. Appreciate y'all. Can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
There you go.
How'd that work?
There you go. I can help that.
Alright, so with that, we'll move into, uh, pu- public hearings.
Evening.
Evening.
Uh, you have before you proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eighty-six, and this is a rezoning request uh, for a property at the southwest corner of Waltrian and Gillespie Road. The property is currently zoned R four, which is multifamily, and the applicant is requesting to rezone this property to B two. And as you can see from the, um, exhibit, the other three, three corners are also zoned B two. So this would be consistent with the, the corner, um, the other corners. Um, the applicant is contemplating, um, putting approximately a ten thousand square foot commercial center. That center is not before you, but just in case you're curious as to what they may have, um, in the works. Uh, this item was considered by the planning commission. The planning commission is recommending approval. We didn't have anybody attend the public hearing to speak, um, against the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Move to approve.
Oh, it's a public hearing, yes.
We got an open public hearing.
Oh.
Might like to address.
Yeah, about one point seven acres, one point six eight acres right there at the corner.
Close public hearing.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Is there any, any discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. We'll move into department reports, and we'll start with engineering.
Only got one item for you tonight, and I'm requesting approval for resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one thirty-six dash R. Approving our roadway lighting maintenance agreement, uh, for the Town Madison I five sixty-five interchange with, uh, Aldoc. Did you have a similar agreement with the Waltrian interchange?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
This baby doesn't like it.
Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. We'll get Mary Beth back up here with planning.
We have proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one zero four. This is a vacation of, um, utility and drainage easement uh, over in Town Madison, um, and you had the first reading at your last meeting. There's our exhibit. So those dark gray lines are the, um, easements that being, that is being vacated. Those are, um, former U and D easements, so those are no longer needed, um, because they relocated the utilities there, and the easements are in the way of the building.
Move to approve. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And your second item is just a first reading, and this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one thirteen. This is also a vacation of a utility easement. This is in the back of, um, a residential property. And you can see, uh, on the, the left-hand side of the property, my left, um, there's a little small square dashed area. It's about a hundred and thirty-four square feet. And, um, the, the, um, property owners are wanting to build a big hobby room in the back of their property, uh, behind their house, and, um, they would like to vacate that, um, hundred and thirty-four square feet of easement area. And again, this is just a first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Recreation.
Good evening. I have resolution number twenty twenty-one one thirty-seven dash R. A warding base bid in alternate number one for Palmer Park Electrical Services project to Hogan's Mechanical Services in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. This is the final part of the Palmer Park Extension Project. This gets electricity to the site as well as installing some bulb field lights.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Move to vote, please.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And, and motion passes.
Hey, Corey, before you holler off or run off, can you kind of just give a quick update on that project and kind of where we're at estimated completion, just for that community?
Yeah, um, we originally had the, the lighting bid in, in another package. Um, when we did the soil test, we found out that the soils weren't able to hold the mass of the lights, so we had to do a redesign on the, on the base of that. That's slowing this down a little bit. We had to take, rebid it. Um, but I anticipate, you know, weather permitting, and we don't find any more surprises, uh, we'd be able to use that facility, obviously.
Cool.
That gives the grass time to settle into before we get on.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey. And Cameron with revenue.
Thank you, sir. Um, just have one item on the agenda tonight, a first reading on proposed ordinance twenty twenty-one one thirty. Uh, this ordinance is necessary for the city to participate in the back-to-school sales tax holiday during the third full weekend of July in twenty twenty-one and all subsequent years thereafter. This is just the first reading.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you, Cameron.
And I have two items for your consideration tonight, and the first one is ordinance number twenty twenty-one ninety-nine. This is a second reading for an ordinance to amend the residency requirement for the Madison Beautification Board, and I'm presenting this on behalf of Councilmember Denzine, who couldn't be here tonight, and also the board itself. And they have asked for an amendment to the residency requirement so that they can have a broader applicant pool of people who have a vested interest in making sure Madison looks its best. Uh, but they were having troubles, you know, filling all of their spots, and they had people who either worked for the city or who worked here in town who wanted to serve but couldn't because of what the ordinance said. And so they asked for your approval to change that requirement, and we'd like to ask for your vote tonight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Any, any discussion?
Thank you.
Kind of precedence to this.
Thank you, Karen. I was talking to, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's good. What, what kind of precedence does this set for other boards and residency requirements and those kind of things?
It doesn't set much of a precedent. Each board has its own particular membership requirement. Some of them come from state statutes, and some of them are chosen by the city. So you can really have, uh, really as council have the authority to tailor each board for the city's needs. So I'm not concerned about this setting a precedent where, um, you feel like Madison, um, you know, daytime employees can work, you know, serve on any type of city board.
I think it had a lot more to do with businesses that, you know, there were businesses in town where they may live outside of town, but they wanted to.
Yeah, sure.
That's what their business, that, that was the main concern from what I remember.
I just, my, my concern was that you opened this up here, but then it ended up elsewhere where you had no legal.
Not necessarily. Um, this board is unique, well, not unique, but this board is one of the boards that the city has created on its own rather than pursuant to state law. So for certain boards, like by state law, you have to be a member and a qualified elector of the city to be able to serve. Um, but for this one, it's not that way.
Bye. Get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye. And motion passes.
And the second item that I have for your consideration is ordinance number twenty twenty-one one forty, and this is just a first reading, and it's authorizing Madison Utilities to enter into an agreement with Breland Homes to convey its interest in a lot where a well site is situated. So under this agreement, they will sell a lot to Breland Homes, but they're going to retain the water rights for five years. And under state law, before the board disposes of property, it has to come and ask the city council to be able to do that. And so that's what we're doing here tonight. This is the first reading, and if you have any questions between now and the vote, just let us know.
Yeah. Thank you. Any miscellaneous business or other announcements? Move to your jury.
Move to your jury.